The purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation, Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, followed by the United States Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by city council. Please rise.
May we pray? Dear heavenly father, we thank you as always for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for your divine intervention, father, to keep us safe and to help us, father, to make wise decisions. And we just pray that you be glorified in everything that we do as we conduct the council's business tonight. We pray in the name of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the right of our wishes, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and rightful citizens, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Item number four, citizens forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to staff person, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council, council members, the city, or employees, as well as individual, individual personal appeals are not appropriate for citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five, five, one of the Texas government code regarding any items on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Good. We will now close the public forum. Moving on to the consent agenda, items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven, zero. Now moving on to our regular agenda. Agenda item number 11, discuss an act on an ordinance amending the traffic control map adopted in section 11.02.005 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paris, Texas, adding stop signs on West Washington Street at its intersection with Fourth Street, Southwest Street, stopping east and westbound traffic on West Washington. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. This item was brought before the December Traffic Commission meeting. A concern had been expressed from residents concerning vehicles exceeding speed down the street. So they requested we look at putting a stop sign at this location. For the month of October, we did a traffic and speed study to look at the traffic in that area. When we finished it, we asked the city engineer to take a look at it and give us his opinion. And he didn't want further. He went out and did a site survey. And he come back and he came before the traffic commission with his findings and recommended that the traffic commission go ahead with, recommended the sign be put in place. So they did unanimously vote at the meeting to do that. So that we're here tonight asking y'all to move forward with this recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion. We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 12, discuss, accept the bid, and approve an agreement with Pride More Construction LLC to perform structural demolition services in the amount of $54 per ton with a contract term. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, this is our demolition contract. It's a three-year term. The previous one went January 1st. So we put out bids. The $54 a ton was the lowest bid. We've checked with other city departments, looked into their, you know, all of the stuff that they put on theirs. They're definitely more than qualified. Pride More Construction LLC was the low bid. So I'm recommending accepting Pride More LLC for the contract for $54 per ton.
Council, is there any discussion?
Do you know what we're paying now?
Yes, currently, we are paying 36.65. So the lowest bid, it was a 47% increase. Which, you know, I thought that was a little bit high, but it was the lowest bid. The second bid was right there at it. It was a dollar difference. So I feel like that's probably the price point. And then we had one that was considerably more, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we know that, I was looking at the contract, and I know about the insurance and all that, and they have to let us know. So, you know, that's one concern. But the other concern, do we know that Pride More has all the equipment needed to perform to do this? Because I know you might come up, it's not like we said every third Saturday we're going to tear houses down.
Right.
It's anytime. So do they have the equipment needed to do this job?
Absolutely. Like I said, we've checked the references. They've also already done a lot of work for the city. They already had insurance through the city, you know, prior to even doing this contract. Heard nothing but good things about them. But yes, they've got all the heavy equipment. They've got the ability to, they've got the trailers, the dump trailers, anything they could need for the haul off, all the equipment to take the, you know, the heavy equipment around the town also.
Okay. And this 54%, this 54 cents per ton, that's for everything?
No. Part of the contract, in the contract, it specifically says that they're placing a bid for their work only. The city will cover all tipping fees. Okay? We already have a rate at the landfill. So anybody that's doing work for the city, they automatically get that rate. So no, the $54 is for the work that they perform to tear down the house. Once they haul it to the landfill, that's a separate charge that the city will also get.
Okay. And that would be, it didn't matter who got the contract.
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Tally, I wanted to ask just a brief question. Could you summarize, or just briefly summarize, what are, what are all the components of a bid? From the time that a subcontractor or contractor would come to you and say, hey, I'm interested in this project. Because I just, I know that there has been a lot of criticism in the past, but I want to make sure that everyone understands the process.
Yes.
And how it's done. Because I know, I don't think any of us were on this. I think this is a city staff level decision, and then with the blessing of council. But I just want to kind of echo the process to understand.
Yes.
And how you, how you guys came about this decision.
Several years ago, we did come to the decision, and instead of doing a yearly contract, we want to do three years. So every three years, prior to asking for the bid, we put it in the newspaper for two weeks. We get the bids in. We had three bids this time, which is two more than the previous two contracts. Previous two contracts, we had one bid only. And obviously, they were the only person to turn it in, so they got the bid. This year, we had three bids instead of one. We also had two other companies reach out. We sent them bid documents. They just didn't turn one in. I guess they weren't interested. We had two bids from Paris and one from Rockwall, I believe. But we, you know, we just, we publish it in the paper. We tell all of our local contractors. Obviously, you know, the previous contractor we had called and told them first. It's like, hey, the contract's coming up, so be ready. Pride More had actually reached out, probably four or five months ago, and said, hey, you know, if it ever comes open. And I'm like, it actually will. So they were ready also. And then I believe they're out of Rockwall, RNDI Companies, LLC, or Incorporated, I'm sorry. They also turned in the third bid. So, but that's pretty much the process. We just, we put it all in the paper, as far as advertising for bids. And then the contractors will contact the city, and we will either email it to them, or they'll come and pick it up. Most places will come and pick it up because we advertise. The contracts will be at city manager's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just one more question. This doesn't have anything to do with how we're going to vote, but the company that already has the contract, did you reach out to them? Because you said before it was what, 30 something dollars?
36.65.
So they went up almost three times as much. Did you reach out to ask them why?
I didn't.
Just out of curiosity?
I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't. I mean, you know, honestly, that, you know, it's kind of a weird, I mean, you know, I don't, I would have had to reach out to all of them. And anyway, you know, they're.
Because we hadn't had any issues.
Right.
Okay. So that's what, I was just.
No, I was very, I mean, I was, you know, on a, you know, work level and really a, you know, a personal level, I was very surprised. And, you know, I've been doing business with them for 12 years. So, you know, I was, you know, upset too.
And it wouldn't have made any difference in the overall outcome because the bids were the bids. And, you know, everybody had the equal footing on placing their bids. So really, the only point in reaching out to them would be because we're curious.
Yeah, just curiosity. But, you know, you probably, you know, as the city attorney, you wouldn't get the phone calls that we would get like before.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
Why didn't you shop? You know, so that's, that's why I wanted to know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 13, discuss an act on adopting a fine fee, fine free policy retroactive at the Paris Public Library. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Hello, Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. Thank you for listening to the library this evening. We're not very, I don't come here very often, so I'm a little nervous. I'm wanting to eliminate a barrier between the library and the public. Right now, we charge 20 cents per day. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it does add up when an item is returned late. It is the new standard for public libraries across the United States. We are trying to be truly open access to our public. We do not want to stand in front of education or even entertainment to our rural city of Paris. I do not, I would also like to lower handling money daily with my staff. On the other side of the things is that I'm wanting to still charge for lost items and damaged items. Most libraries have found that the books are brought back in abundance when people find out that they're no longer charging late fines. There is a 90-day timeframe of, let's say you check out a DVD and a book, you have 90 days before your overdue item goes to lost status. An email goes through, and nine times out of 10, the book is returned, and the fee is completely waived. Any questions?
Any discussion? Any questions?
How much revenue were you capturing with late fees before?
On average, between $2,000 and $3,000 a year.
Do you know the percentage of folks that actually paid?
It's very small, very, very small, to be honest. In my math and calculations and whatnot, I would say maybe an eight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I was always curious about that number.
This is something that I had brought to my board for strategic planning, five, 10 years out. And I remember being surprised and proud of my board when they said, well, why do we need to wait for that? It is the new norm. We want to be able to give everyone access to the library. We do not want to charge if someone is late, low mobility, can't get to the library until next week. I would like to eliminate it as soon as possible.
And then they decide to keep the book because they don't want to pay the $2 or whatever. And I get that. So that's a great strategy.
Yes. It brings the books back.
Yes.
My, my media line and my budget is, is good. It really is. And I continue to buy books. But I want the books that I've bought back.
Right.
On our shelves. It really deters people. I mean, the fines seem small, but let's say two weeks go by, and that $5 may not seem a lot to some, but to others, it's, it's a loaf of bread, as they say.
Right.
I actually spoke to Commerce Public Library about an hour ago, and they went fine-free in 2023. It is the norm. And my predecessor, Tim DeGelder, he first introduced children read for free. I want all, I want everyone to read for free in our library.
So if they don't pay the fine, the fee, what happens?
Their account is blocked. After the 90 days, that item that was not returned, it puts a hold on their account. It's not continuing linked to grow in fines. It'll be the cost of the item plus a $4 processing fee. That's it.
So they don't get to come back until they pay the fee?
They can come to the library. They just can't leave with anything.
Okay.
Until that amount is paid.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to, just briefly commend you guys from what you do at the library. You guys have really taken that program to a whole nother level. And especially the opportunities you bring for folks to get online and be able to kind of explore the options that you have available. So appreciate all that you do at the library.
I absolutely love the library. It's my job to keep up to date on current issues, trends. And I feel like I've done that. And I think this is, this isn't even a hurdle. This is just a discussion. And I would hope that you felt the same.
Council, any other discussion?
I just think, I think it's a great idea. I just thinking your budget, I mean, is there other places that you could capture that $2,000 someplace else? Not monetarily, but fiscally, just finding it somewhere to save. That's my question.
I'm very proud of our budget.
Yeah.
And I don't want to say $2,000 doesn't matter. But at the end of the day, I don't feel the need to find the $2,000 elsewhere, to be honest. Not for penalizing the public.
And possibility, if I could throw this in, a possibility is even though we may not, may be losing $2,000 of fines, we are also probably gaining our property back, which we might not ever see. So.
The idea is to open the library more to more patrons. So on the flip side, we're going to have higher foot traffic and more attendance numbers.
And they're more likely to bring the book back.
Yes, sir.
And return it.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? And if not, I'll hear a motion.
Make the mo, go ahead. I make the motion that we adopt the fine-free policy for the Paris Public Library and make it retroactive.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven, zero. Item number 14, discuss an act on a resolution approving and authorizing an economic development agreement by and between the City of Paris and AUDAX Enterprises. Staff, do you have a presentation?
I do. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. This is a project. It's for a 380 development, retail development agreement with ODEX, that's how I was pronouncing it anyway, Enterprises, who bought the Williamsburg Shopping Center on Clarksville Street over there across from Kroger. And if you've been by there, you know how much better it looks than it did prior to this change in ownership. They still have nine spaces that they need some assistance with renting out. And so what we've agreed to, and we've talked about this with council before, is an agreement that, that provides for some five annual ad valorem tax grants for 2024, 2025, 2026, 2027, and 2028. That's 50% of the portion of the maintenance and operations, ad valorem taxes assessed and payable to the vacant spaces. Each grant will be in the amount of 18% of the total MNO taxes assessed and paid on the entire property. The percentage has been calculated by multiplying 50% by the percentage of total square footage of the vacant vertical improvements to that of the total property. So that's the nine empty spaces is 36% of the total square footage of the property. The agreement also includes a tax sale, a sales tax incentive in the form of three annual grants, each in an amount equal to 50% of the sales tax receipts attributable to new retailers' sales for '24, '25, and '26. Based on the current taxable value of the property, I calculated that each of the five yearly property tax grants will be in the approximate amount of $1,390. We don't have information regarding what to expect from retail sales tax because we don't know who those tenants are going to be yet. But that would be 50% of sales tax revenue that doesn't exist right now. So it's 50% of something versus nothing that we're getting right now. So staff has negotiated this agreement with, with the owner, and we would recommend approval.
Council, any, any discussion? Any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you. Agenda item number 15, discuss an act on a resolution amending the guidelines and criteria of the Five and Five Housing Infill Development Program. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. We are back again with the Five and Five Infill Program. We are back again with the Five in Five Infill Program. This is an amendment to the guidelines and the criteria that we did in last year, August. And the reason for this is, in actual fact, it was adopted, and it was made much more flexible, but also made the developer with an existing and active agreement ineligible for new agreement unless at least there was 80% of construction under the original agreement, which will have to be completed. And the aim of this limitation is to keep the city's inventory of trustee properties available and also keep any single developer from tying up trustee properties in that it may not ever develop. So, the real issue here is that the 80% requirement as written applies to any developer whether the active agreement provides for the conveyance of trustee properties or not. In practice, most of the agreement approved under the program have involved properties which have previously been acquired by the applicant. In those instances, the city is only providing incentives, that is, tax abatements, reduced fees, and et cetera, which and when there is construction is either completed or imminent. Making such an applicant ineligible for a new agreement does not advance either the goal of promoting redevelopment or the goal of maintaining the city's inventory of trustee properties. Consequently, staff has proposed a revision to the guidelines, which will apply the 80% construction requirement only to developers with existing agreements pursuant to which the city conveyed trustees' properties. Likewise, for the same reasons, the proposed revisions dispense with the requirement of proof of financial ability when the applicant is building on their previously owned property and is not seeking a conveyance of land from the city. So, this will allow the applicants with multiple developments involving their own, previously owned properties to enter into additional agreement regardless of the completion rate of the improvements required under the existing active agreements. So, the proposed revisions also clarify the language in the 2024 amendments, which have caused confusion among applicants. And so, we have attached a redline version of the proposed amendment that we want to propose to you for this proposed resolution for a cleanup. So, we recommend that there be an approval of a resolution adapting proposed revisions to the guidelines and criteria for the Five in Five Housing Infill Redevelopment Program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Staff, any questions, any discussion? Or staff, sorry. Counsel, apologies.
So, let me be clear. The only thing that we're taking off, the 80% completion requirement, it still applies if you're using city trustee parcels, right? But, we're taking it off if you're entering into the agreement using your own property. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, right now, we have some applicants that they want to mix both their own property?
Right.
And the city.
Right.
And that is what we are trying to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
And the amendment also provides that if you've entered into an agreement that has both trustee properties and previously owned properties, I'm not sure we have any of those, but we will likely in the future?
Yeah.
That that 80% rule will apply to the parcels that were conveyed under the program. So, you know, if a developer is developing on property that they previously owned, the only thing the city is out is the fees and the tax abatement. And that doesn't happen unless construction is either about to occur in the case of the review and the fees, or has already occurred in the case of tax abatements. So, the city really doesn't lose anything in these agreements that are on developer-owned properties. So, I think that applying the 80% rule to their previously owned property doesn't advance any of the goals that were the point of the August amendments.
Right.
Oh, and what I was starting to say, and I lost myself, is that if it is mixed, then the 80% applies to this city- conveyed property. I think I did say that, so.
Yeah.
I'm good with updates. Just have a general question on the five-on-five. We haven't seen new applicants. Are you working with some? Are there some new agreements that'll be coming forward?
Yeah.
Oh, I have posted one for the first meeting in February. I went ahead and posted it. An applicant has an agreement on owner, the property he already owned, and is seeking a new agreement on some, for some city- conveyed properties. So, under the rules and the guidelines from August, that wasn't possible. I went ahead and posted that. In the event that counsel does not approve the revisions, we just won't go forward in that meeting. So, we've got that in the pipeline. And we did, we have done one since the August amendments because we did that one for tower construction either in November or December. And I think they've got some others in the pipeline, but they haven't made it as far as me yet.
That's great.
One question. How many parcels can, like, say if I was in the five-on-five, how many can I have at one time? How many, in the initial agreement, how many can, how many city trustee parcels can I get?
We do not technically limit the parcel, but we limit the number of units you can put on there because the size can vary. The size of the lot.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what I'm asking. How many lots can I get in the initial agreement? I've been in some of these meetings where people will try to, you know, grab lots.
Right.
Doesn't matter the size and how many parcels, I mean, how many doors they're trying to put on that lot. How many lots can they have at one time? I think it's in the agreement. I can't remember.
What the guidelines say is it limits the number of units to 10. So, as a, you know, as a practical matter, that also limits the number of parcels in any agreement to 10. Most of them will be fewer parcels than that because historically, we've had folks building duplexes and whatnot. So, it's a whole lot fewer lots than that.
It cannot be more than 10 lots.
Correct.
Okay.
Just to echo off of that, I really appreciate that because there are a lot of people that want to be a part of this process, and they may not have the financial means today to be able to get that. But, have like one or two people, just wrap up the whole inventory. That could really set a, set a really bad precedent. So, I appreciate that you guys looked into that.
Well, and to that point, they did such a good job on the August amendments in community development. A person wanting to put a single home on a single parcel is eligible under the program now as long as that parcel is within the program area. So, that opens it up to a greater number of potential developers.
Yeah.
I'll just say one more thing. I've seen the amount of time that you guys have put into this and the questions, and you're trying to like figure out, hey, where's our weakness? Or where are we at on this? What else are we not thinking about? And you guys have really worked hard to kind of think of all the scenarios. So, I appreciate the time.
We're trying to stay ahead of all the questions. But, as a necessity, this thing will always be kind of a work in progress as we not only learn what developers need, but we learn over time how our housing needs change. So, you know, there's probably never going to be the last edition of these guidelines. We want it to, we want to keep up with what the demand is on both sides of that equation.
Yeah. And even though, you know, I know it's work in progress, and you'll go through challenges, and you have to make revisions, I think the spirit of the Five-in-Five process has been, it's successful. I think in the last, what, it's been like two years or however long, it's been successful because we're trying to get these lots filled, and people are using it. So, that's the point.
And the point will always be the guiding star for what the revisions are.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right. Well, if not, then I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 16. Consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff. Pursuit to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything?
I was just gonna bring up that in light of the fires that LA is having, if we could just get a presentation at some point at a future meeting of what our maintenance looks like for our fire department as far as hydrants, what kind of schedule they are on quarterly or annually. I think it would just make our citizens feel a little bit better that we are prepared. Not, I mean, for any, I mean, we just want to make sure that there's a good understanding.
Good. Absolutely.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 17 adjourned. I will hear a motion.
So moved.
All right, and a second? All right. We are adjourned.